I'd like to call this meeting of the Zion City Council in order. Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Datin?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Pastor Fielding?
Well, I'd like to remind you of some of the words of Scripture which say, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart; lean not on your own understanding and all your ways; acknowledge Him, and He will direct your paths." You know, there's quite a few times when we think we know what is best, and we use our own understanding rather than trusting in Him. And I know the, some of the situations that we're facing in the city, and my counsel and my prayer is that you guys would seek the Lord and His wisdom, because that's where the real answers are. So, let's pray. Father, we thank you today, God, for the promise of your word, God, that if we will acknowledge you, if we will put you first, God, that you will lend us your wisdom and your understanding, and you will direct our paths. And so, Lord, that's my prayer for this, for this council. And, Lord, that you would direct the thoughts and the hearts of these men and women, and, God, that there would just be a, a real consensus, Lord, of, of what your best plan is for this city. And we just ask these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
A motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
We have two people that would like to speak today. First is W.C. Bremner from Zion.
Mayor Hill, honorable sirs, gentle ladies, I stand before you this evening to ask, to bring to your attention two items. First, I do thank you for putting the red alert system on the agenda for discussion, and I would respectfully request that you reinstate this system. It was originally designed, as you know, for emergencies. I understand the 12,500 a year in costs. I have sat here through many of your sessions, listening to your debates regarding where you're going to get the money. I understand this. It was for an emergency situation, and there was an emergency situation a couple, a month or so after you got rid of it. A water main broke. We had no water for about three-quarters of an hour. Not particularly a big thing, but in your discussions this evening, I would ask you to consider what might have happened should the water system been contaminated and a boil order would have to be issued. How would you do it without this system? The second item, the Peoria Journal Star newspaper, Friday, 21 June. I bring it to your attention out of general interest. I read through it. I read the article and found it very interesting. The headline tapped out towns to take water to market. It discusses various communities throughout the United States that have sold their municipal water systems to private for-profit companies. It discusses other town or municipalities that are considering this. And third, it discusses municipalities that have done this and then want to buy their water systems back. Part of the problem is, what is a water system worth, intrinsically worth? What do you charge for it? What do you sell for it? And what do you buy it back for? Permission to approach, sir? I'd like to give you this article for your perusal and dissemination.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah.
Do you know, I mean, this hasn't been considered by our board, has it?
No. And keep in mind that the Lake County Public Water District is a nonprofit entity. Basically, whatever we charge is what it costs to produce material, produce the water and deliver to the, to the customers, which are Zion with the parlor and the State Park.
I understand, sir.
It's not, it's not a profit system.
If you would...
I don't advocate either way. I read through it and found it interesting and brought it in for your information only.
Well, if you would forgive me for my pun, although we are tapped out, I don't think I would ever be in favor of selling our water system. I think, anyway. And I guess I would ask, would you, would you like to come up to the podium when we're talking about the emergency system and participate in the discussion?
I would like to stand by, if I may, sir.
Okay.
I do thank you all for your time, your courtesy and your attention to this matter. Permission to stand down, sir.
Commissioner Grant? Next on the list is Ken Fielding from Zion.
Well, I'd like to begin, I'm not going to speak as eloquently as my friend that just did. I mean, he's, he's really good. But I'd like to begin by just issuing a, a thank you to one of our officers, Craig Hethke. Back in the end of June, our church had, had a computer stolen during our food pantry on a Wednesday, and we was able to figure out who it was via cameras. And the very good part of it is, within two hours, the thief was in jail and the computer was returned. And, you know, I just wanted to, just go on record as saying, you know, as, I've been serving as a chaplain here in the city for at least 10 years now, something like that. We've lost count, I think. And, and that kind of service and that kind of professional response is common. And, you know, it's just, and it's really nice to be on the receiving end on this time. And I know a lot of times our guys get a lot of criticism and everything, and, and I just wanted to give a hearty thank you. So, very good. In addition to that, I would like to, I saw in the paper this week that there is a consideration for another gaming facility and such, and I'd like to speak to that. On one of the, on one of my ride-alongs with the police department, we were called to one of our current gaming facilities, and when I walked in with the officer, there was a disturbance. And I don't think it was a common thing. I'm not speaking about anything like that. But, but when we walked in, there were five customers at, at the, at the slots, three of which I knew from the food pantry. And I was kind of taken aback by that. It troubles me that these gaming facilities are being used by people who can least afford to be there. And it just, it just, it's troublesome to me, very troublesome. And that we're preying upon, upon the poor and the weak. Now, I know the argument is, well, it's their choice, and I, I agree with that. But I also believe that, that the Scripture and the Lord would also hold us accountable who take advantage of such people. We need to be careful about that. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is that I do not, I am not in favor of this kind of adult entertainment that would include alcohol and gambling. We started with this a while back, and it just continues to grow, and it's an increasing blight upon our city. And so, when these things come up again, commissioners, I would ask that you rethink what you're doing with this. I don't believe that these, that these types of things are going to be the answer to our deficits at all. And, you know, to put it in another way, I don't believe that all money is good money. And, and we want, we want to do what's right. We want to do what's blessed. So, I just set that before you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is a consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on July 18th, 2017, 7:05 p.m. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on July 18th, 2017, at 8:25 p.m. Bills, vouchers 126929 through 127012 drawn on First Merritt Bank, total $720,894 and 74 cents.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number seven is consider passing resolution as follows. 7A is amending personnel authorization per Mayor Hill. Before I get into the details on the personnel authorization, there are a few comments I want to make and an explanation of why some of this is coming about. I don't know how many of you know it, but a commission form of government as we have it here in Zion is very rare throughout the state. It has proven to be not efficient. It worked many, many years ago when governments were small and towns were small. And by statute, there's a commission form of government which provides that there's a commissioner for public affairs, a commissioner of finance, commissioner for building, zoning and public property, commissioner for public safety, and a commissioner for public works and engineering. And like I said, it worked well for a long, long time. But most of the commissioner form of governments have gone the way of the horse and buggy. I just want to read you something here. This is from, this is when, this is when it worked, I think, really well. This is May 24th, 1950. And the bills, this is from the city of Zion. The bills with the addition of the treasurer's, treasurer's charge for preparing annual report, and also the $4.50 refund noted heretofore, amounting in all to $5,971.41 were presented. That was the monthly bills for the city of Zion in 1950. I don't know if you caught it, but the clerk just in the report and her consent agenda, we just approved bills of $720,894. My point being that things today are much more complicated, and we have to be efficient and effective in what we're doing. Just about everything that we do in the city, and this, I guess this goes to Mr. Bremner's concern, everything we do in the city involves safety. That's, when you, when you look, get down to the basics, that's what we're here to do, is, is to provide for the safety of our citizens. Obviously, police and fire are the two that, that come to mind, obviously, when we're talking about safety. But buildings, we have to be sure that our rental units and all the buildings in town are, are de-coed and protect the people who are living in them. And you think, well, what do finances have to do with safety? Well, finances, we have to be sure that we have enough money in a responsible way to pay for all the safety things that we do carry out here in the city. So this is not a mom-and-pop operation anymore, and, and I'm not going to suggest that we change the government. I'm not suggesting that we go to referendum and come another form of government. But I think, and I think that our city council, our responsibility, and I think it's, I think we're doing it right now, and I think we're doing a good job of it right now. But our responsibility is that we should be making policy and procedures and stay out of the operations of the departments. We are not, I was a, a park and recreation director when I, in my previous life, and I got elected, and I knew, know a lot about parks and recreation and golf courses and swimming pools and fitness centers and all those things. But I didn't, when I got elected, I didn't know anything about building. And for me to get involved in the operations of the building department would have been And like I said, I think we're doing a good job right now of letting our department heads run their departments. Our responsibility is to hire good people, get out of their way, and let them do their jobs. If they don't do their jobs, then it's also our responsibility to get people who will do a better job. But it's not a minister's position, and it's not a, someone who's been involved in the NBA for, how many years, Commissioner? Forty years?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine years, to be involved in the operations of a department of the city and making decisions when we have experts sitting over at the table over there. So, I'm going to propose, and I have proposed, changes that I think will make the operation of the city more effective and efficient. I've talked to the commissioners, and I've talked to all the department heads, and it's been received with unanimous support. Clerk Bert Kemper has decided that she would like to retire. Her retirement is going to be effective November 3rd. I think whenever a key person in the, in any organization retires, it's a good time to reevaluate what you're doing, how you're operating, can you do things better? And this is one of those opportunities. And before I get into the details on this, I want to be sure that everybody understands that this is revenue neutral. We're not, this is not going to cost the city any more money. We're just moving money around to different, different positions. So, if the commissioners, you have your resolution in front of you, and starting at the top, what I would like to propose and hopefully have accepted tonight is that there would be established a, a new position within the city. It would be a full-time position. It would be a city administrator slash finance director. And then there would be a, an additional part-time position added to the city, which would be a part-time human resources director, working approximately 24 hours a week. We lose a lot of money right now in the city through a number of, we'll make some mistakes or some oversights on personnel matters because we do not have an extremely well-trained personnel director with the city. Diane has been doing it. She's learned a lot of things over the years, but she has not, she has not been trained in personnel matters, and she would, she's the first one that would insist that, that this happens. We lose money in workman's comp issues that aren't, might not be identified immediately. Health insurance benefits and how they're paid off, and when somebody leaves the city, and how long we have, how long, you know, the, I can't even remember all the terms, but we lose, and we lose money there. And on some of our employment and terminations, when, when someone gets terminated from the city, whether they decide that they want to leave, and there are just issues that arise that we need someone who's trained in, in personnel management. As you go down, item under the city clerk's office, the deputy city clerk position will be eliminated. Cheryl Spooner is presently in that position, and Cheryl will be filling the clerk's position once Diane retires effective November 3rd. Some of the duties that the deputy clerk presently carries out, primarily the business licensing, will be shifted to the economic development coordinator, and she'll pick up those tasks. And then down at the bottom, you see we have a, a director of finance that that position in itself will be eliminated. However, there, and Director Nabel will become the city administrator slash finance director. He will be giving up some of his finance responsibilities. And the assistant to the finance director, which we have right now, it's a full-time position, Barb Fitz Henley, she'll be picking up a lot of the day-to-day entries and operations of the finance department. Many of her responsibilities, primarily health insurance, payroll, and workman's comp, the new personnel director will be picking up. So, we're going to be moving responsibilities around. Some people are going to be picking up more. In fact, everybody's going to be picking up more because we're doing with less positions. And I think that what this will do is, we are all part-time people up here. Some of you have full-time jobs. Some of us are retired, but all of our positions are part-time positions, and we need someone full-time to be, be sure that the operations of the city are carried out in the most effective and efficient manner. And that's what we're looking at on, on the first page of the personnel authorization and the second page. Item number six, it says one senior clerical assistant, that's a full-time position, that is presently is not filled, and we will be eliminating the position from the employee authorization. And when you go down below in the police department, items number nine and 10, item nine is 10 telecommunicators full-time and six telecommunicators part-time. Both of those will be eliminated, and that's because we have combined our telecommunicators with, with the city of Gurnee. Is there any discussion, questions? You've all heard this and are aware of it. So, I just wanted to give an explanation to the public on what's happening and why, and hopefully we'll be even more efficient and effective in the future. And I want to say that our, that our department heads are, I think that the department heads that we have right now, I've been around Zion for a long, long time, and I think they're as good as we've ever had in our city. And I think throughout the city and a lot of the departments, we have just as good of employees as, as the city's seen in, in a long time. So, this is no reflection on, on anybody's ability to do their job or what they're doing. As a matter of fact, it's a, I think it's a, a voice of confidence in, in what you're doing, and hopefully we can move forward to that and do a better job. Are there any questions or comments?
Just one question.
Mm-hmm.
If we're only going, if we're not, if we're going to eliminate the position of deputy clerk, who's going to cover if Cheryl is out sick or on vacation?
The economic development coordinator will be responsible for the business licenses and to cover for meetings or when, when Cheryl's out.
Okay.
And that, your question sparked something in my, I want to explain something else, and it's gone.
It'll come back.
Doesn't hang around long. If I don't grab it while it's in there rattling around, it, it goes quickly. Oh, and the deputy city, the clerk, Cheryl will be, she's going to stay right where she is. And she'll be responsible for keeping me in line. So she'll maintain those responsibilities also. Questions, comments, motions?
I don't have any questions, but I think it's a, a good move, and we've essentially been operating this way. David has really picked up quite a bit of responsibility already, and I'm looking forward to continued good work. And I agree that we have professional, competent department heads that keep our city going. The thing that we're, the real hole is going to be Diane leaving. That's going to be the real hole.
I, I agree 100%. And I, it's, it will, it will not be the same without her on here. But we still have her for August, September, and October.
It won't be the same. It'll be better.
It'll be different. I'm not sure it will be better. It will be, we will miss you. Although this is a little bit early for me to start getting modeling. So I won't get modeling. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend the personnel authorization as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is consider passing ordinances as follows. The A is granting a special use permit to operate a veteran, now we're going to do vet, veterinary clinic at 4527 Illinois Route 1703 as petitioned by Dr. Gray. Second reading, per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dr. Gray was requesting a special use permit to operate a full-service veterinary clinic. Planning zoning permission, voted, recommended to approve, and the city council voted to approve on the first reading.
Is there a motion to approve? So moved. You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. A B is vacating a portion of 22nd Street right-ofway and alleyway, per Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. What you have is an ordinance and exhibit vacating a portion of the 22nd Street right-ofway and alleyway. Few, probably a couple of years ago, or maybe a year and a half ago, the city granted the Zion Park District siding for cell tower on Park District property. This is a housekeeping matter. We discovered at that time that a portion of the fencing perimeter actually is on city right-ofway in the alleyway. And so, in, in further research, we also discovered that 22nd Street right-ofway was never vacated. Zion Maintenance, Parks Maintenance Garage originally was Zion Street Department site. And then there was an agreement between the city and the Park District to relocate the Park District over there.
Right.
So basically, where 22nd Street dead ends, it's still, at Hebron Avenue, it is still city right-ofway, which goes through the maintenance garage area, which is off its end. So we're trying to clean this whole thing up so it's free and clear for the Park District.
So is the tower on our property right now?
Part of it is.
So we can split the fee with them?
I suggested that before, but some of you didn't listen.
I think they might object.
Probably.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve this vacating the portion of 2nd 20th Street right-ofway and alleyway and...
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion?
So the, the amount we're charging, is this a yearly fee that they're going to pay?
It's a one-time fee.
One-time fee.
Covering the cost that the city incurred in preparation for the flat recording of that attorney's fees, and that's it.
Okay. It's a lot less than what they're getting at a tower. We have a motion in a second.
Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8C is approving and authorizing execution of an economic incentive agreement with TDWR, LLC, TIP3, Culvers 3335, shared ground, per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Fisher. You have quite a large packet in front of you. That's everything that was submitted by Culvers in regards to the project. As you can see, it's a significant renovation, both interior, interior and exterior, and this was all presented to the, the TIF review board. They went through all the details, had questions back and forth, looked at what was eligible and what we've historically done in the past. And based on all of the, the information you have before you, the TIF board and I recommend approval of the incentive agreement in amount not to exceed $50,025. And I would also ask that on section five of this, there's a slight change. When it talks, in section five, A2, it talks about the payment of, of the incentive agreement. And I would just like to add that payment of the TIP incentive shall be provided by the city within 14 days to the owner through a series of reimbursements, just to include a time period in there, on once we receive all the information from them, that we will make sure to get the reimbursement to them. Other than that, all the terms in it stay the same.
Is there a motion?
What, what section is that, David?
Section 5A, 75 city obligations, clawback and lien. Item A2, payment of the TIP incentive shall be provided by the city to the, within 14 days, to the owner through a series of reimbursements. Let's just make sure they, they get their money timely for reimbursement.
I'll make a motion that we approve this economic incentive agreement with the changes Director Nabel suggested.
Is there a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion?
I have a question, Director Nabel, is were there TIF-eligible, other TIF-eligible expenses that were applied for that, that they didn't get?
Part of this? Yeah, the, the original application request, I think, was for $400,000. But there are a lot of things, you know, interior tile, painting, things of that nature that isn't, that's more design.
But those are not eligible for...
Correct.
Correct. Well, my question is, was there anything that was eligible that was turned out? Well, my question is, was there anything that was eligible that was turned out?
I believe there was.
Do you know what they were?
I'd have to look back at the minutes of the TIF board, but, you know, interior plumbing, let's see, what did we, the interior plumbing, the electrical and the parking lots were included, but, you know, there's, if you look through specific details, you can have carpentry, which is somewhere around $25,000. Building permits are also eligible under that. I mean, we'd have to go line by line, but the TIF board has basically taken more of an approach of kind of a skin in the game for existing, existing properties because this, while this will definitely make a better, you know, visual impact down to downtown which helps spur development, they, I wouldn't expect to see a significant increase in property value as a result of it. It's more of a maintenance and upkeep as required by the corporate level. So they granted this based on existing structure, but also trying to improve the area and draw more development and that was just the comfort, the level they were comfortable with recommending for approval.
A question was asked at the TIF meeting if the franchise was going to be providing any financing for this. Is that, is the franchise going to be providing some financing?
Yes, exactly. Just to clarify, in the parking lot, it was parking lot lights, the parking lot, when I did request, that one was not supported, but it does need repair, just for clarification. But yes, I went to the bank and the main reason is when I, I have the papers here, which I think you have copies, you know, from the values, I lost 500 and some thousand dollars. And since I've owned it since 2009 and so...
In value?
In value. It was 1.5, $1,575,000. When I went and had it appraised this year, it's a million dollars.
Was there an explanation? I mean, if you don't want to share that with us, that's fine.
I know, you know, the banks don't control, they go to someone else and they go around and make assessments of what the value is in this area, so you're right, I was so shocked this as well, I was concerned. But, and that's why I'm just asking for support. I mean, many of you people know who I am, you know me from before when I took over and everything I've said and I've stuck money, every year I'm putting money into this place. Couple of years back, the record will show I put over 100 and some thousand dollars redoing the restrooms. I'm here to stay.
Yeah, I enthusiastically support it. I was just wondering, like, I guess my question was which ones, or why didn't the ones that were TIF-eligible get funded and, you know, I understand the skin in the game, but $350,000 is a lot of skin, so, but anyway, we have a motion and a second.
Nice, I was looking for, I don't know, let me just clarify, you know, corporate's mandating to do this, but also the reimage, we may get more viable for ADA compliance in some of the tables so it's more user-friendly. We have a strong senior base here. A lot of people are coming in and is supporting and we want to do the right thing. And so, you know, I would, at all, if the TIF could also look at the support of the parking lot in addition, it'd be a great help, but otherwise I'd...
So, I mean, why did you choose this, these three items, electrical, interior plumbing and parking lot lights? Because the, I mean, the outline that Mr. Rich gave was, had a lot more on it.
Yeah, I mean, the...
There's nothing in the discussion that seems to, I mean, it doesn't look like it was deliberated, he just chose those three.
There was kind of an amount that they felt comfortable with supporting and they tied it to items that have been historically covered by TIF grants in the past.
Okay.
So, I mean, if there's more that would be eligible, that could be in the motion as well, subject to eligibility of cost, but that was just, that was the recommendation of the TIF board that was deliberated at the time.
Well, I don't want to, just my own opinion, I don't want us to say, yeah, we're going to give that money, additional money than this. I'm, like I say, I fully support this, but if the TIF board would be willing to look at it again, you know, and if they come back with the same recommendation, they come back with the same recommendation. Because to me, if we're doing that, I'm doing exactly what I said I don't want to do is get involved in the operations of different departments, but I just, I'm curious, but so anyway, I guess, we have a motion and a second. I don't know if they're, Commissioner, did you have something else you wanted to say? Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item nine is discussion authorization and approval. Nine A is request permission to fill a service technician vacancy in the Public Works Department per Director Calangelo.
Thank you again, Your Honor. With the recent reservation of service technician, we do, we have created a vacancy within the Public Works Department. Staff is requesting to post and hire a new service technician to fill this position and advertise if necessary. No personal authorization is needed and this position has been included in this year's plan.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to fill this position.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion?
What does the service technician do?
Well, this individual was in the street division, filled street maintenance, snow plumbing, carpentry.
Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item nine B is consider adjustment of city water rates per Director Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Fisher. We touched on this a little bit in the last meeting when we had the order from the Lake County Public Water District. Annually, they provide us their audit and also what the new rates that they'll be charging to us based on their costs and their overhead and the amount of gallons being used. The rate for them will be going down, the rate that they'll be charging us will be going down 10 cents per 1,000 gallons and I'm recommending that we adjust the city's water rates down by 10, 10 cents per 1,000 to pass the savings on. The decrease will affect water sales revenue by about $60,000 with a corresponding decrease to the expense line and that goes with it. If adopted, the new rate would go into effect starting on the November 2017 billing, as that would be for water used for August through September, so it would be for the August, if we're adopting the rates in August, we can't charge for those until November. So I wanted to get council's decision on that before we actually prepare the ordinance, amend the code, which would come back on the meeting on the 15th if that was the desire of the council.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we reduce the water rate by 10 cents.
I'll make the motion we reduce the water rates by 10 cents too. It's not going to be hard to get a motion. It's my first motion in two years.
Great job. I mean, this is almost your first, first move as the city administrator.
No, 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 he's not city administrator until November 3rd.
I thought it says effective as of today.
That's what it says.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. That's not, the other ones are, no, those are, the whole change of responsibilities, that'll happen November 3rd, I'm sorry.
Just remember that they go back up. We do lower when they pass through, but we have to increase it when they pass it through too.
So we have a motion in three seconds. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine C, this is brought up at, nine C is discussion regarding the Code Red notification system for mayor. This is at the request of Mr. Bremner at the last meeting and I'd like to open it up for discussion as far as the reinstituting the Code Red. It was a $12,500 line item at the time that we cut it out. Is, is there any change to that?
We did get a quote from, we initially got a quote from the system that Gurnee uses as well. The quote was based on 24,000 households, not 24,000 residents. I would expect that it'd be the same price. I had, I just received the revised quote today, so I haven't had a chance to look through it and I want to say 10, I saw the number 10,000 on there and that's a unlimited use, unlimited use system that is the one that Gurnee uses. Now, we, to Mr. Bremner's point, we do have notifications in place for hand deliveries for water main breaks and we try and post boil orders and things on the website and wherever we can. The old system, we didn't use for water main breaks originally, for water main break notifications, but that's because we had a minutes requirement or restriction. It's probably more of a policy discussion on what we would want to utilize for notifications before we actually decided to spend money on it so that we, if we were going to pay for it, that we decided we were going to use it to the best of the ability for the residents. Whereas before it was just for strict emergencies, for the additional financial cost if we went beyond minutes versus other means of notification, whether it be website, social media, hand deliveries, things like that.
Considering how much we actually use the Code Red, it didn't seem like it was worth the $12,500 that we were putting into it and that's why I voted in favor of canceling that service. The fact that we have to get information out to our residents is still there. One of the things that our Cubs group is doing right now is talking about that very thing, how to communicate with our various neighborhoods, precinct by precinct. So they're in the middle of that discussion. There's been some talk about some services that are available for free that some of our precincts are using right now. And I also get an inordinate number of robo calls from various people about various things and I understand that making a robo call is actually very cheap. So I wonder if we could look into even a system like that where residents can be contacted via the kind of lists that are available to robo callers, just as a stopgap measure? Doesn't seem to be very, I've never done one myself, but I understand it's not difficult to do. And somebody's got my number, that's for sure.
How are, how are citizens notified that don't have access to the internet when there's an emergency?
What type of emergency are you referring to? I can address Mr. Bremner's situation.
Okay.
In Mr. Bremner's situation, if a boil order was necessitated, they would have been hand-delivered to each house, the boil order is. We've never used a notification system for a boil order. The only time we'd ever use it would be an event similar to when the transmission line leaving the Lake County Water District plant ruptured.
Right.
Years ago, that affected Zion, Widdop Harbor, everybody, because that was the feed leaving the plant. Situation like that, you would want something like that in place, but that's very rare that's going to happen. In Mr. Bremner's situation, even though he lost pressure in his house, there was still pressure within the main, but the velocity, the discharge is leaving the break in the system, that's why he's not getting water at his house. As long as that system pressure doesn't drop to a certain level and they can fix it while it's still semi-pressurized, then you don't necessitate a boil order. You just fix it and you move on your way. If they would have had to do a complete shutdown, then they would have went door-to-door to everyone within the isolation zone and they would have delivered it. We've had larger ones in the past where if it's too large, they hand-deliver, but maybe it's, you know, four or five blocks, then TV, radio, newspapers, everybody's notified all at the same time. There's a list out there. Sometimes you'll see the little ticker on the bottom of like Channel 7 News or something else like that. If we had a big event like that without a Code Red, that's where you would be seeing it, is on all the TV stations and radio stations.
Since Code Red was an opt-in system, do we have, you know, how, how many people actually signed up for it for the Zion area? Do we have any way of tracking that through the vendor? Did they give us any data?
We'd probably be able to get that back from them, ask them, when we, what we would do is, you know, rob closure or something like that, how many calls were made as a result of it, but I don't have that in my brain.
Because I think the, your suggestion with the robo calls, there's, there's a problem with that is it can't be targeted and also you have cell phones, there are people who are on, do not deserve lists, who do not get these calls. So I think relying on something like that would be kind of iffy. With the opt-in system, at least if we promoted it, then those who really want to have this, this notification will opt into the system, so that's very targeted.
That's what the Cubs group is doing and Kathy, I think you're, you've started a phone tree like that with your precinct, haven't you?
Well, I use Nextdoor and it's just internet, so you have to belong to the neighborhood to actually get the email notifications. So they don't get them involuntarily.
So it's an opt-in type thing?
Yeah, we opt-in.
Is there anything out there that would just automatically call all of our residents or do they, do they, can we only get something where they have the opt-in?
I don't know that uphand with the, with the way things have been lately with the do-not-call lists and things like that. I mean, somebody has your number because somebody sold your number. I mean, that's...
My number's listed on our city website, so...
Well, that too, but we're not going to buy residents' numbers and things like that to make sure they get, I'm not sure if it's always something that exists, I'm not aware of it.
The only thing that bothers me about it is that, and we were just talking about it, I was talking about it earlier, is that much of what we do is safety and we just ran into, we decided that we were going to take, how much out of the budget for spraying for mosquitoes?
$7,000.
$7,000 for three mosquito sprays and of course the year we take it out, the West Nile virus is discovered in Zion and so we put it back in, at least for one spray and I guess I just, and I voted the same way you did to take it out because of the finances, but I'm, I don't know, I don't know how we would notify people if we had, and I don't anticipate a flood like they had in Gurnee and these other places, but if we had something horrible like that, I don't know what we'd do. Mr. Bremner, you wanted to...
Sir, when the system was first set up seven years ago, residents were asked to provide phone numbers. I personally gave mine to Chief Lewis. I understand cell phones, don't know how they work, but that's because I'm a travel bike, but if you want to be notified, you just give the city your number, cell phone number, smartphone, home phone, whatever news they hear, just the number, call me when there's an emergency.
Well, I wonder if it would, I mean, can we find out how many people did sign up?
I think Chief Lewis has it.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. I mean, if, if we've only got, you know, 1,000 people signed up, then...
Well, if those, if actually those contacts, if those numbers could be ported over to another system that we could utilize, then we could contact those Code Red people.
Right.
Or even our water bill, we could send out a request if you want to be part of the Zion emergency call list, provide us with a contact number and we can make our own phone tree call list.
I was just going to say in reference to the robo calling and stuff, that data is easily purchased, all you have to check with any of your elected representatives, that's how they get it, that's how they're done.
The school does it very well. The school does it very well. District 6 lets you know email and phone.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of services.
District 6, you said?
It can be purchased.
District 6.
I'll check with them too, what they use.
District 6 does it very well, it bugs you. You get it all, you get four emails and three phone calls. I got a house phone, my wife got a phone, I got a phone, all three of my phones blow off at the same time. We be thinking it's an emergency and just telling us something going on at the school.
Can we get some more information on it then for the next meeting?
We'll dig some more info, number of calls, what District 6 uses and robo call options and opt-in options.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Fisher, just a question, you must have audible systems if there's an emergency. How about on your... How about on your audible systems, if you do a different kind of sound, where then people would then turn into a search station, or you connect to the city, you would have a notification?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, sirens, trap sirens.
If you have a channel, usually you have sirens, if there's a different kind of signal that could go around in your community, it would let people know that there is something, and then whether they have the capabilities or not, they can use television or internet, then you tune them, and at least you don't eliminate people that might not have the emergency services.
Right. From my house, I can hear when the park closed, the state park closes.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, we could get a truck to walk up on the street. Okay, well, we'll get, gather some more information for the 15th. Thank you, Mr. Bremner.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 9D is consider approval of a solid foundation application to participate in CDVG Commercial Sign and Facade Improvement Program for Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Earlier this year, we received a CDVG grant for, I believe the total was $99,500. Basically, the city is just to administer the grant, but it's for signage as well as facade improvements for businesses within the Zion borders. It's a 50-50 grant, basically, they have to put up half of whatever the eligible cost, or the eligible cost of the eligible project is. This is our first application, it's for a solid foundation LLC out on 173 in Green Bay. The applicant is requesting for signage and some fencing that qualifies into the grant. Total project of 60, total project cost is $6,800, so the amount of the grant would be $3,400, and staff is recommending approval of the grant pending building department review and permitting.
This is basically what their final product's gonna be?
Yes, proposed. Worth it to watch.
I'll make a motion that we approve this CDVG grant applicant.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number 10 is departmental commentary. Department heads have anything they'd like to say?
Could I say something?
Yes, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank, commend you and the council for taking the action that you have in moving our city forward in its total operation, by moving personnel into key positions. I want to thank you for that. You've been a proactive mayor, and I really appreciate your attitude to moving our city forward. In thinking about David Nabel, I've talked to department heads, and before I was where I am now, and ever since he's been here, they've been able to relate with him, be able to discuss things with him. They may not have always agreed with him, but they like working with him and for him. So, thank you for the forward movement that all of you have been participating in, I want to thank you for moving the city forward. That's as, that's as much as I have to say.
Thank you. So there's five of us here, so, thank you guys, appreciate it. Item 11 is announcements. Thursdays through September 29th, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Zion Farmers Market, location change, it's at the Zion Park District Leisure Center, $2,400 Memorial Drive. August 15th at 6:30 p.m. is the Zion Township Board Meeting, and I'm wondering, and you guys will have to decide this, the board meetings seem to be getting longer, and we seem to be starting our city council meetings late when there's a township board meeting, and I'm wondering if you might want to discuss at that meeting if you want to start at 6:15 or something, just so that we can get started at our meeting on time.
I did, I did have a conversation with Supervisor Neal a couple of weeks ago, and I had asked if maybe she wanted to expand the timeframe, maybe start a little earlier, give her more time, so...
Great.
It might be a good time to discuss that.
Well, I mean, she does provide a written report, which she reads, and as far as I'm concerned, that report is in front of us, we don't need to hear it. There are ways to shorten the meeting, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, she either needs to get more time, or she has to talk faster, I'm not sure which one. August 15th at 7:00 p.m. is the Zion City Council Meeting. There'll be a public hearing regarding the BINA, B-I-N-A. Item number 12 is we are in need of a closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2 Open Meetings for the Discussion of Personnel and Collective Bargaining. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?